Major funding for this program was provided by the League of Women Voters of Juno. Major funding for this program was provided by the League.
Good evening. Welcome to the 2025 Municipal Candidate Forum for our Juno Assembly, our School Board, and our ballot initiatives in this October's election. I'm Sally Sadler. I am with the League of Women Voters, and I am delighted to welcome everyone here this evening. Many thanks to our KTOO partners for helping produce tonight's event, and we also want to thank KINY, the Juno Empire, and KTOO because they are distributing and making available this event so people who can be here tonight can see it, but if you're not here, you'll also be able to see it. We're hosting tonight's event from KTOO Studio Live on the Lincoln Ane. The League of Women Voters has been working to defend democracy for over 100 years. It's a, we're a nonpartisan organization committed to no political party but to concepts and issues of democracy. Our goal is to encourage informed and active civic participation. One of the ways we do that is by hosting this particular event, or some of you may have attended, our How to Run for Local Office Workshop as well. Tonight's questions are from members of the League of Women Voters as well as from the students from Juno Douglas High School, Yada Akala. We also have a great information video on the ballot initiatives that will be playing in between the School Board candidates and our municipal assembly candidates. In closing, I just want to remind you all to vote like democracy depends on it because it does. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our moderators.
Hello. My name's Judith Mitchell. I'm with the League of Women Voters.
And I'm Patricia Turner-Custard, also a member of the Juno League of Women Voters.
This forum is being aired live on KTOO 104.3 and KAUK 91.7 FM. You can watch on KTOO 360 TV, ktoo.org, kinyradio.com, junoempire.com, and of course, on our league website, junolwv.org. If you want to watch the forum later, the video will also be available at all those websites.
Juno's by mail election is taking place now through October 7th. Ballots were mailed to all registered Juno voters on Friday, September 19th, which is today for those listening or watching live. There are three ways to get your voted ballots back to election officials.
First, you can send them in the mail with postage. They must be postmarked on or before October 7th Election Day. Ballots can also be placed in secure drop boxes that are available 24 hours a day. They're located at City Hall, the Mendenhall Valley and Douglas Libraries, the AELNP office, and the Stadner Harbor Boat Launch.
Ballots can also be delivered in person to vote centers at City Hall Assembly Chambers and the Mendenhall Valley Public Library starting Monday, September 22nd. You can also vote in person at both vote center locations up through Election Day. Find more information, including hours of the vote centers and how to apply for an absentee ballot, on juno.org/elections.
We're starting with School Board candidates today. There are three open seats this year: two full terms and one partial term. And four candidates are running. The two candidates with the most votes will hold full terms, and the candidate with the third-most votes will hold the partial term.
Tonight, we're going to forego opening statements to allow as much time as possible for questions. The first candidate, who was selected at random beforehand, answering each question will have 60 seconds. All subsequent candidates will have 45 seconds. We'll end with a one-minute closing statement from each candidate. Candidates, please be mindful of the timer and wrap up when you're close to zero. The timer will ding when you are out of time.
Now for the questions, beginning with Jenny Thomas. What are the main reasons teachers leave the Juno School District, and what will you do as a School Board member to help attract and retain excellent teachers? You have 60 seconds.
From what I've heard from several teachers this year is that they're wanting to leave because they're feeling undervalued. And so I would like to get a board member or two board members involved in the negotiations. There's no board member in the negotiations room, so it's hard for me to tell them basically, like, oh, we should do A, B, and C when I'm not in the room, knowing what exactly is going on. So I think that's something that needs to be changed. We need to be more involved in the negotiations themselves. And I would also ask them, what's the one thing that they would need besides money to feel valued and respected? And I think that that would be, help us keep a lot of teachers.
Great. Thank you, Jenny Thomas. Jeremy Johnson, same question.
Well, it's my impression that teachers are leaving because of the costs associated with being a teacher. I hear that healthcare costs have rise, risen, and as a result, some teachers are earning less money this year than they did last year. So even if they were to gain an overall increase in their income, it wouldn't feel as meaningful. I'm also familiar with certain dissatisfaction metrics that have improved recently, and I would like to continue that process of improving those metrics by reaching out to the union, to reach out to the teacher, and find out what would make them want to stay.
Thank you, Jeremy Johnson. Steve Whitney, same question. You have 45 seconds.
Thank you for hosting this. This is a great service to the community. So, we can't actually be in the room. We're kind of the judge of the union administration contracts, and so we're not allowed legally to be involved in that part of the process. We spend 90% of our budget on salaries and benefits, and we're capped. We have a limited amount of money. Benefits cost, I mean, compensation costs a lot of money, and so, and smaller class sizes and fewer teachers. The teachers are overworked. They have too much to do. There's too few of them for the number of students we have. We need to increase the revenue stream. We're way underfunded, and that's, in a couple of years, hopefully, we can do that. We need to survive until that point, and then hopefully rebuild.
Thank you, Steve Whitney. Melissa Cullum, same question.
My experience as a teacher has led me to believe, and that school climate is important. And we need to look at the needs of the students and the teachers, and are their needs being met? We are hamstrung with funding. That's not going to change. In fact, I think it's probably going to get worse. So we can't keep throwing money at it. We need to find out what teachers need to be successful. What resources can we help them that don't cost money? What kind of partnerships can we make? What kind of mentor, mentor programs can we include so that we can alleviate some of their paperwork or things that are bogging them down? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa Cullum.
The next question starts with Jeremy Johnson. How do you regard race relations and immigration issues in our school system? If you believe there are issues, how would you propose remedying them? You have 60 seconds.
Wow, that is a very important topic, especially in the modern era. I believe that race relations are a long-term concern. I believe strongly in reparations activities. I shrug when I say strongly because I'm new to the community, and I'm new to understanding what reparations means in Juno. It was only recently that I learned from the Juno Douglas Museum what the race relations were like in our history. So I believe the topic is a very important one to address, and the kinds of solutions that I believe should be brought to the table are bringing the parents into the fold of learning a little bit more about what's meaningful to the local community as far as race relations go.
Thank you, Jeremy Johnson. Steve Whitney, same question.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, there are issues in Juno, some big issues. When I was on the board before, at the National School Board meetings, I realized there was a data set called National Clearinghouse Data, and I pushed to get that, and we got it. And I wanted to get that data released. It didn't happen, but I'd want it released now. And we know that half of our students go to college, 30% graduate amongst our native students, at least this is 2016, 19 data, that 50% go to college, only 10% graduate. We need to release these numbers and be honest to the community how things are happening, and we need to address it. Until that, those numbers shift, things will not be right or holds.
Thank you, Steve Whitney. Melissa Cullum, same question.
One of the things that you need to look for when you're, as a teacher, is to make sure all of your students are getting a fair and equal education. And there are some racial issues in our school district. I do know a lot of native families who feel that they are not listened to, and that their children are subjected to different rules. So I think that we can, even though the district works very hard in bridging that gap and trying to connect students with the land and the culture, I think that we can improve.
Thank you, Melissa Cullum. Jenny Thomas?
For improving it, I think I would reach out to our partners, Lincoln Haida, Sea Alaska, to see what they suggest for helping bridge the gap that's there and making things improve. I talked to the Juno Independent, like, I would love to see, like, an immersion week of having kids go and do subsistence things to get the experience, and I think it would make people more aware of what's going on and more appreciative of the culture in general.
Thank you, Jenny.
All right. I would like to invite Sam Lagerquist from, who is a senior at Juno Douglas High School, Yada Akala, to ask the next question. Steve Whitney will have 60 seconds to answer the question first. Sam?
Thank you so much. The question is, who should have what role in deciding what material is available in classrooms such as banning books?
Yeah, first, thank you for participating. So, there are districts who put it on the onus of the teachers. They let them use their professional discretion. And I am very much against silencing other people whose views we don't agree with. We need to, we need to be respectful, and we need to, there are things that all of us disagree. There's 30,000 people in Juno. I don't think there are any two who agree on everything. So we, there are certain standards. I don't think any of the books that I've heard being banned actually meet those legal standards of obscenity charges. I, it's definitely, parents do, they are their guardians, the students' guardians. They have the right to pull kids out in many cases, but it should be up to the teachers and the staff to decide what's appropriate, and we should defer to their professional judgment.
Melissa?
The teachers are the professionals in the classroom, and so therefore, I think they are the ones that should decide what kind of materials they are using. Of course, all materials are typically approved, board-approved, so it's not like the teachers are just randomly picking and choosing. As far as what goes into a library, I think there shouldn't be any, there should, books should not be banned there either. I think everyone deserves access to a variety of materials, whether it's offensive to some, it might be necessary for others. And we need to make sure that everyone has, is able to see themselves in their classroom, even though it might be difficult for other people. So I am, I am adamantly opposed against banning books, and I think we should be actually more open.
Thank you, Melissa Cullum. Jenny Thomas?
I agree with Melissa on this. I think that as long as the material's age-appropriate, you know, for the libraries, I don't see an issue with it. And I think that parents do have the ultimate choice of what they want their kids to be exposed to. And so if a parent is not okay with whatever books have been laid out by the teacher, I don't see a problem with having an alternate suggestion. I think you should respect the parents' choice of what, you know, their kids will be reading. I think that's very important. Family values matter a lot. And if there's sensitive subjects, I mean, you could have a separate section in the library where the sensitive subjects are, and kids, their parents have granted them access to those, those reading materials. I think that would solve some of the issues.
Thank you, Jenny Thomas. Jeremy Johnson?
Yes, thank you so much. I'm against book banning in general. I believe that the policies in place are valuable, and that the policies in place expect the teachers to communicate with the librarians, who are well-trained, and as I recall, are supposed to be bachelor holders and certificate holders in managing the library collection. I can say that I also trust my kids, right? I'm a house dad of five, and when my daughter brought home a book where the fellow was beating the mother figure, she didn't want to read that book anymore. It was time to put it down. I trust the policies and the children.
Thank you, Jeremy Johnson.
Thank you, Sam. Our next question, starting with Melissa Cullum. One of the primary roles of the School Board members is to approve a budget. What is your process for balancing a school budget given variables such as uncertain state funding of the BSA, potential loss of federal funds, and increasing costs? You have 60 seconds.
The board is limited on what it can do other than be an advocate and make sure that it is working with either other boards or having the superintendent work with other superintendents across the state to lobby for extra funds. But disregarding that, the board can look at different programs that are grant-funded. We can look at partnerships with community members, with other businesses. There are mentorship and internship programs. There's programs similar to how we have our special, I'm going to call them our alternative schools, and how they are funded. So I think we need to look at the structure of where the money is, how we can best use it, make sure we're capturing all of that, not losing our grants. And when we're talking about cuts, we need to not just look at teachers, we need to be looking top-down.
Thank you, Melissa Cullum. Jenny Thomas?
For budget and the future, I think I would look at, are we putting most of our funds where it's going to benefit the kids the most? If you look at what district office expenses are versus, like, our biggest school JD, why is there such an age gap there? I would, I mean, not age gap, a money gap there. So I would look at, can we divert resources that are going to be best suited to help our kids? And partnerships and grants and all those things as well.
Thank you, Jenny Thomas. Jeremy Johnson?
Yes. Long-term budget preservation, it requires some significant amount of planning. And while I can appreciate the need for grants and the need for expanding programs like the CTE program, I also want to keep an opportunity to, a focus on preserving the existing programs that are already successful, you know? We've got some very powerful programs that aren't directly funded by the state or by the federal government, and expanding on those existing resources as well as collecting those grants is going to be mission-critical.
Thank you, Jeremy Johnson. Steve Whitney?
So the most important thing is to spend a lot of time to understand what's in the budget, and it's complicated. There's a lot. So when things come up, like, potential cuts, last time I was on the board, I mean, IT department was on there, counselors were on there. So when that happens, I took the time to go actually talk to the IT department, go talk to the counselors, and figure out what it was that I was potentially cutting. And there's a lot. It's a lot of work. So that's the first and foremost. And avoid extra unnecessary new programs is number one at this time. We desperately need more benefits to the teachers in smaller classrooms. So that's, that's my approach. It was my approach last time.
Thank you, Steve Whitney.
Great. Starting with Jenny Thomas. Extracurricular activities are important for maintaining student engagement. There were concerns during school consolidation that there would be a reduction in access to school activities. How do you ensure that all students have access to all opportunities?
That's a great question, and our fears were realized so far. I mean, the first year after the consolidation, the numbers were great. This year, we're starting to see a decline. And so to me, that's a little concerning because what I've heard from some coaches is like, well, we knew this is what was going to happen when we went to a big high school. And I find that unacceptable. What do we do about it? I'm not sure, because we have so many teams, but they have no one to play, and kids are dropping out now because they don't want to be a senior on a C team anymore. So finding a way to reengage those kids is critical. Maybe steering them and beefing up our Parks and Recs programs? I'm not quite sure, but it is an area that we are already seeing some decline in. So I don't have a great answer for you.
Great. Thank you, Jenny Thomas. Jeremy Johnson?
I have a little boy who has autism, and he was invited to participate in after-school programs. And he was able to participate because there was funding there for him to have a pair of. And I thought that was really special. And so I took the time to reach out to the kids and said, hey, what are you guys doing now that there's no funding? And they are knocking on doors, like mine, and reaching out to the community, like you, and asking them, hey, can you buy some season tickets? Would you sponsor me in a 50-50 raffle? If, if the government isn't going to give the funds, then the community is the only last line of defense to keep kids able to participate.
Thank you, Jeremy Johnson. Steve Whitney?
Yeah, thank you. So with, when you have a major change like the consolidation, there's always going to be upheaval, and there'll be opportunities and losses. There are fewer spots on varsity teams, but then there's also a wider variety of, of activities for students as well. It's important to really, really, really push activities. Classrooms are where you learn knowledge. You learn how things work. Activities are where you learn how to do stuff and make stuff, and actually work as a team and make things happen. They're both critical for lifelong success. The most important thing is to make sure the support and funding for the activities doesn't decrease, and there's more opportunity for all of our students. It's, I can't emphasize enough how important activities are.
Great. Thank you, Steve Whitney. Melissa Cullum?
Unfortunately, the consolidation made, took, made our extracurricular activities take a hit. We don't have the resources as far as with sports. We don't have enough coaches for the number of students who are athletes who want to participate. How we fix that, I honestly, I don't have a solution at this point. I know that we have already, we as a community are super generous. I hear what Steve, what Steve was saying about we need to have, work with other people. But as someone who has been doing fundraising in this community for a long time, those were stretched there. So we need to look at ways where we can not do it through funding, but how can we reengage students, and all of them, not just the select few?
Thank you, Melissa Cullum. Jenny Thomas?
Oh, you did? I would like to invite Sienna Farr, who is a senior at Juno Douglas High School, Yada Akala, to ask the next question.
Thank you. What is your personal relationship with the Juno School District, and how do you think that prepares or qualifies you to be on the School Board?
Jeremy Johnson, you start.
Okay. I have five children, and four of them are in four different schools. And I've had a relationship with six different schools total. So that means that I have an understanding of what it means when a teacher becomes a principal, when that principal changes schools, and other unique instances, like developing an IEP plan, an IEP plan for over 10 years, and then choosing not to develop an IEP plan with other kids that could probably use it. I spent time in years past volunteering with the PTO. Whenever the PTO asked for someone to raise their hand, and my hand was able to go up, there it went. And this year, since I've been a house dad now for five years, I made it a priority to participate in not only the PTO, but the site council in preparation for this opportunity.
Thank you, Jeremy Johnson. Steve Whitney?
Thanks, thank you. So, I have two sons who went through kindergarten through high school in the school district, and have been here a long time. I was on the site council early on. In the Gelberk administration, I really got frustrated by the lack of community, the ability of the community to participate. And so I eventually ran, one of the successes was we reintroduced Robert's Rules of Orders, so board members were actually able to ask the public questions in meetings. That's, it's kind of important for democracy. So I do have experience doing that. Um, yeah.
Thank you, Steve Whitney. Melissa Cullum?
My personal relationship with the district is a little different from everyone else's. I am a homeschool parent. My kids did not
I am a homeschool parent. My kids did not take any classes with the district until high school. And then they took several classes, and they also took classes at the university. So they've had a hybrid experience. So what I know about the district, I know from my communications with my friends who are teachers, with my fellow community members who have students that attend school there. So I decided to become involved with the district once I saw what was going on with the consolidation. And it alarmed me how it was being handled. I am qualified for this position because I am a retired teacher, and I also have school board experience.
Thank you, Melissa Cullum. And Jenny Thomas?
My son just graduated from Thunder Mountain in 2023, and my daughter's a senior at JD this year. As they went through the school district, I at points homeschooled them, and then they would go back to school. I helped in their class once, twice a week when they're in elementary school, and then in middle school, that was no longer cool. So I couldn't do that. I substitute taught last year in the high schools and a little bit at the elementary school. And then I've been attending board meetings ever since the beginning of the consolidation. And then after the consolidation, I've still attended the board meetings and then also joined the JD Site Council just to kind of help with what's going on there and, you know, help with their prom and Safe Grad. I'm involved with the Safe Grad Committee as well.
Great. Thank you, Jenny Thomas. That's it for the questions for the school board candidates. We'll conclude this section with the candidates' closing statements, starting with Steve Whitney. You have one minute.
Thank you, legal voters, and thank you for K2. Democracy is stressed right now, and your mission is never more important than, is more important than ever, it's ever been. And I ask everybody listening to this to turn out and vote on October 7. Generally in these midterm elections, we don't get a high turnout. But in these times, more than ever, it's important to turn out. The schools are, we're in for a hard stretch. We, most of our funding originally comes from the state. And when we govern by veto overrides, that's not a normal functioning scenario. Our job now is to survive for two more years and hopefully rebuild. My goal in running for office again is to be part of that, part of that healing after the pandemic and the consolidation, but also keep things stable and make us survive to the point where we can actually fund our staff and rebuild our system. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve Whitney. Melissa Cullum, one minute.
Yes, thank you for hosting this event. I am really excited about running for school board. I think I have a lot to offer the board and the community. I am really excited about working on the communication within the district. So that way, all the key people are talking, students, teachers, board members, parents, community. So we're all on the same page. We know what is going on all the time. I'm really focused on academics. I, it hurts my heart that I see students that don't have classes in high school, or middle school students who are repeating classes, or elementary school students who are not having access and teachers are having to scramble for some core classes. I would also like to work on the strategic plan. This is a district, the district puts it out every five years. We've got a five, it will, we will be able to lay out a plan of what we're going to do for the funding, how, what are we going to do with curriculum, what are we going to do for stuff like extracurricular activities? We can develop clear goals and metrics, and I'd like to be a part of that.
Thank you so much, Melissa Cullum. Jenny Thomas, one minute.
Thanks for having me here. I'm also excited for what's coming up. I think that there's a great candidate pool for the school board, and I think that we'll be able to navigate through these hard times, thinking creatively and really engaging the community and bringing more community involvement and engagement. I'd like to see that happen with the school board and the schools in general. And I'm hoping that you vote for me.
Great. Thank you, Jenny Thomas. Jeremy Johnson, one minute.
My name is Jeremy Josiah Johnson. I have five children. Four of them are currently enrolled in four different schools. It would be an honor to serve you, like I did as chief administrator of the Community Emergency Response Team, like I did as shop steward under ASEAN when I had my time with the state. My experience in the business world is with business process management and business process improvement. My central focus when I come to take care of the business of operating the most important board your kids are involved in right now is going to be looking at those finances. It's the area that we are all worried about, and I hope that I can bring my acumen, my experience, and the honor of being a father to the table when you vote for me.
Great. Thank you, Jeremy Johnson.
Thank you, school board candidates. Now we have a short piece from KTOO's Clarice Larson about the three propositions on the ballot.
Juno's 2025 municipal election is just around the corner. Candidates for Juno Assembly and School Board are on the ballot this year alongside three questions. Two aim to reduce the tax burden on individual residents, but it will come at a cost to the city's coffers. The third attempts to boost city tax revenue by increasing the sales tax rate when cruise tourists are in town, then lowering it again in the off-season.
I actually think this is probably the most consequential election we've had locally in the 15 years I've been here.
Christine Wall is a longtime Juno Assembly member and chairs its finance committee.
Each of these will have a big impact on the city's budget and ability to fund services in our community.
An advocacy group called the Affordable Juno Coalition gathered enough signatures this spring and summer to place Proposition 1 and 2 on the ballot. Angela Rodel is the treasurer of the group and formerly ran the Alaska Permanent Fund Corporation. She says the propositions are designed to make Alaska's capital city more affordable.
We have a very high cost of living, and that impacts almost everybody, except obviously the wealthy.
Proposition 1 seeks to cap the local property tax rate, also known as a mill rate. One mill is equal to $1 per $1,000 in property value. Right now, the city caps the mill rate at 12 mils. But if voters pass Proposition 1 this election, that cap would be lowered to nine mils. Now, that change could lower property taxes for property owners, but it also means the city would take in less revenue each year. The change wouldn't be immediately devastating to the city's roughly $140 million in annual discretionary revenue. But Wall says over time, it could substantially influence the city's ability to fund the services residents usually expect.
It results in about a $2 million loss to city revenue every year, which is significant. And, but when I think long-term, it's maybe less about the money and more about the city's ability to respond to changing environments.
Rodel argues the change will force the Assembly to focus its spending on needs versus wants.
I think we can figure out how to tighten that belt a little bit. And I think it's really imperative that the city show its residents that they care about affordability and want to really focus on the things that make this community very livable.
So that's Proposition 1. Proposition 2 would also shrink the amount of revenue the city brings in each year. The proposition seeks to exempt essential food and residential utilities from local sales tax. Right now, the city taxes food and utilities like just about everything else at 5%. But if the initiative passes, it would drop down to 0% for everyone, regardless of their income. Economists say that taxes on food hit low-income people the hardest. Juno Assembly member Neil Steininger is an economist, and he supports the concept.
We don't have the supply chains that can provide us, you know, lower-cost food like La Vara is down south too. And then, you know, that really impacts, you know, your day-to-day living, because, you know, you got to eat every day.
But he warns that the current 5% tax on food and utilities brings in a combined $10 to $12 million in revenue to the city annually. He says removing that tax would leave a serious hole in the city's budget.
That's more than just a little belt tightening. You know, that's, that's more than just, you know, buying less paper clips and buying less Post-it notes. That's really looking at the overall spectrum of services we provide and choosing some to not provide.
That's why the Assembly put Proposition 3 on the ballot, which asks voters whether to implement a new seasonal sales tax system next year. This proposition would raise sales taxes in the summer months and then lower them in the winter. It's aimed at taking advantage of the 1.7 million summer cruise ship tourism visitors that come to town each year. Other nearby southeast towns like Ketchikan, Sitka, and Skagway have similar seasonal sales tax structures already in place. Juno currently charges 5% in local sales taxes. If voters pass Proposition 3, shoppers would instead pay a 7.5% tax from April through September, and a 3% tax from October through March. But Rodel says she'll be voting no on the measure, and the Affordable Juno Coalition is advocating against it because she says it won't actually save money for year-round residents and businesses.
It needs to go back to the drawing board. They need to do a better job about defining how it's going to help the residents of this community.
The last day to vote in Juno's by-mail election is October 7. For KTOO News in Juno, I'm Clarice Larson.
Great. Welcome to the Assembly candidates. There are three open seats this year and four candidates. One candidate is running for the area-wide Assembly. One candidate is running for Assembly District 1, and two candidates are running for Assembly District 2. Juno residents can vote in all races on the ballot regardless of where they live.
The first candidate, who is selected at random beforehand answering each question, will have 60 seconds. All subsequent candidates will have 45 seconds. We'll end with one-minute closing statements from each Assembly candidate. Candidates, please be mindful of the timer and wrap up when you're close to zero. The timer will ding when you're out of time.
Beginning with Greg Smith. We'll talk about spending in a moment, but first, we just heard about the three propositions related to city revenue on the ballot. What are your positions on the propositions and why? You have 60 minutes, seconds.
It will take a lot of time because they are so important. This could be maybe one of the more consequential elections and questions that our community has faced in a very long time. I will be opposing the mill rate cap, voting against the mill rate cap Proposition 1, and supporting Ballot Measure 2 and 3 to remove the flexibility and nimbleness of future assemblies to respond to uncertainty in state and federal funding, or things like the Glacial Albers flooding at this time would be, would not be prudent. I support reducing cost of living, and the sales tax exemptions do that. It does create a significant hole in the budget, and the seasonal sales tax fills that. It also helps all residents of Juno feel direct economic benefits of the visitor industry. That exemption would save an average family of four about $1,200 to $1,400. So, important for cost of living. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg Smith. Ella Atkinson?
Thank you so much. Yeah, I will, Greg spent a lot of good time talking about Ballot Measures 2 and 3, which I am supportive of both of them. So I'll just say very quickly that I think it's a really great example of passionate community members in the city collaborating to make something great. We have an exemption that will help our lower-income families and a way to pay for it that doesn't overly tax residents and shifts some burdens onto the tourism industry. I'm pretty concerned about Proposition 1, though, for a lot of the same reasons that Greg mentioned. You know, just this year, we're seeing a ton of spending on the Glacial Albers flood. We saw cuts from the feds for our libraries, and in order to keep them open every day of the week and continue our library loan program, we had to fund them. So I think it's really important that we keep the adaptability of our city and we allow for our Assembly to make those budget decisions.
Thank you, Ella Atkinson. Wade Bryson?
I'm going to have to agree with my two colleagues that I'm a no on the ballot Proposition 1. Yes, let's remove sales tax for our residents. But we do need to pay for the services that Junoites ask us for. There's no service that we provide that isn't asked for from the community. I'm really worried about Proposition 1 for the average homeowner. This year would have been the, I think the number is $80 was the difference. But if you own millions of dollars worth of property, those, that becomes thousands of dollars. So a mill rate cap would reduce our flexibility. It would benefit the wealthiest landowners of the community. That's why I'm a no. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade Bryson. Nathaniel Brooks?
Yes, I will be voting yes, yes, no on the ballot initiatives. The mill rate cap doesn't include voter-approved bonds. So if the city needs to get projects done, they're going to have to ask, and they'll just need to be more itemized and planned out. And that always almost makes it pretty digestible for the community. And think of the demographics of people who are buying homes these days. A lot of young families, young individuals trying to get their first home, and this would be a benefit to them. If the ballot Initiative 3 was the only one that passed, it would be $11 million extra for the city, but at the risk of removing the senior sales tax exemption. And that's something that the community really doesn't deserve on top of everything else that's been happening.
Thank you, Nathaniel Brooks.
The next question starts with Ella Atkinson. Balancing a budget is a critical responsibility for the Assembly. What do you consider when deciding what to fund and what to cut? You have 60 seconds.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that is the most important thing that our Assembly does is good budgeting, right? So, I mean, very clearly, there's some things that the city simply has to do, right? We have to plow our roads, we have to fund our schools, we need to be sure that we take care of those basic needs of the community. But I do think that there are a lot of things that are important for quality of life that aren't necessarily required for the city to fund, that are very important, right? That's pools for, you know, kids to learn to swim in, which is very important in our coastal community, and also for our seniors to recreate in. That's keeping our trails so that we can actually go and explore and live in the beautiful place that we are privileged to be in. So when it comes to what to fund, I do have, I think, a view of quality of life as another necessity that the city ought to pay for. When I'm looking at cutting things, you know, it unfortunately is this quality of life stuff. So when we are looking at a budget limit, those things that I do think are very important will have to be kind of reconsidered because, like I said, we have to plow the roads and we have to fund our schools.
Thank you, Ella.
Can you repeat the question?
I sure can. Balancing a budget is a critical responsibility for the Assembly. What do you consider when deciding what to fund and what to cut? Wade?
Thank you. So all seven years that I've been on the Assembly, we've passed a ballot budget. We look at the expenses that we are historically providing and the services that the community has asked for, and we've designed a budget to match that. Some of the projects funding that we've had, when a department has elapsed or they don't spend all the money, there's a good culture of returning that, and it's part of our fund balance. In terms of cutting things, every time that we try to cut something, it is a, there's a user group out there. There's nothing that the city does that doesn't have a user group. And so trying to make a reduction that has real impacts on the citizens in Juno, you have to have public process and bring them into it to find out what to cut.
Thank you, Wade Bryson. Nano Brooks?
Yes, the core essential tasks of any municipal government is to make sure that the health and the safety of the community is taken care of, education is taken care of, you know, quality of life and affordability. These are all the things that should be the pure view of looking at how to make processes, how to make decisions. And if they don't fall within those pure views, then those are secondary things. Right now, we have so much pressing on the community that are affecting those really immediate issues. So things that have not necessarily been pursuant to that need need to definitely be toned back a little bit.
Thank you, Nano Brooks. And Greg Smith?
Yeah, thank you. As we look every year at balancing expenses with revenue, you know, one thing we always look at very closely is the mill rate. Just as we're evaluating a mill rate cap, we should, I want to let people know that last year's mill rate was the lowest in the past 30 years. This year's was the fourth lowest. So always an item of attention and a lot of work. You know, we fund things, you know, for cost of living. We fund the essentials, police, fire, roadwork, and those type of things. But then we also fund things for cost of living. Some of those would be in jeopardy with a reduction in revenue from Ballot Measure 2 if we do not make up for that funding with a seasonal sales tax.
Thank you, Greg Smith.
All right. Starting with Wade Bryson. What public policy issues confront Juno related to cruise ship impacts, and what are your plans to address them while on the Assembly? You have a minute.
The biggest ones that have come up are the five-ship limit and the daily passenger cap. We're now having a discussion because of the gold belt development on the backside of Juno. But that is so preliminary that we have not had it as a discussion as an Assembly. But it's very clearly going to be something that we're going to have to spend a good bit of time bit of time on. We're going to have to have public process through that. You're also -- it's a different situation. You have a native corporation on native land that can kind of do what they want. And so, those are some of the things. We've appointed Alex Pierce as the Tourism Director, so having somebody who is a point person for the city that can handle the different tourism-related things. And we say tourism, but I always like to point out there's two different industries. We have a billion-dollar international cruise industry, and we have a local mom-and-pop tourism operator industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade Bryson. Nano Brooks?
There's these large projects that are coming down the works, and they're going to impact the community greatly. And right now, city representatives need to be going the extra mile to forge the best partnerships and relationships with these types of entities that are going to be forming to make sure that the operations result in the best benefit to the community as a whole and not just specific industry. You know, a land acknowledgement at the beginning of a meeting is really nice, but then to not let the Clinckit people build what they'd like to build on their land is, you know, going against that acknowledgement. So, right now is time to forge the greatest of partnerships to make sure that these big things are going to benefit everyone without having a hamper.
Thank you, Nano Brooks. Greg Smith?
Yeah, so, you know, the five-ship limit and the daily passenger limits allow us some space and time to be able to address, I'll call them pressure points, that push onto the community and our residents related to tourism, things like congestion downtown, whale watch, wake and traffic in Statter Harbor, helicopter noise. That allows us to do those efforts, to work on infrastructure and other policy improvements to make the quality of life better for our residents as well as improve the visitor experience. You know, I think something like a seasonal sales tax helps everyone benefit. It also might reduce the tension between the community and the visitor industry.
Thank you, Greg Smith. Ella Atkinson?
Yes, thank you so much. So, I think that the most important thing when we're considering tourism is that we're always working towards a healthy, balanced tourism industry. And by that, I mean tourism industry that's very important is one that, you know, benefits our community, supports our small business. Small businesses, people come back and want to, like, come here on the plane and actually spend more time here, spend more money here, support our community, but also one that doesn't impact locals overly. And so, what we've been doing, as Mr. Smith mentioned, is the five-ship limit, daily passenger caps. When the fifth dock was approved, we put a ship-size limit, and we agreed to have one on the city docks as well. So, three out of five docks downtown won't see growth in ship size in the future. And that idea is just to let us build infrastructure so we can actually support the amount of tourists that are coming in every year.
Thank you, Ella.
Next question, starting with Nano Brooks. Affordable housing continues to plague Juno. How should the city reduce homelessness in Juno, and what should the city do in the future to continue to address affordable housing? You have 60 seconds.
Thank you. That's a great question, and there are things that can be adjusted within the city charter for the building code and Title 49 that is currently being worked on to allow structures that historically wouldn't go through the permitting process or wouldn't be allowed to now be used and implemented in certain instances that would address those needs for the unhoused individuals. But affordable housing has a pretty bad track record with the status quo currently. You know, between projects like Ridgeview and Peterson Hill, we've seen millions of dollars in taxpayer money go into projects that were supposed to produce affordable housing, and that hasn't been realized. So, making sure that the processes are readdressed and that the money is actually being used in the most effective way to address immediate needs is the path that we should be steered towards.
Thank you, Nano Brooks. Greg Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Housing obviously is just an incredible challenge for our economy and just ability for people to live here, stay here. We have pushed very hard on efforts to make housing more affordable. We put millions into the Affordable Housing Fund every year. We've done numerous grants for significant amount of money with community partners to invest in low-barrier housing and, yeah, other things that get people to be able to stay in, you know, off the streets and in a home. We need to continue those, keep on working with -- to work on the Title 49 rewrite, but a lot of those efforts take money, and we need to have those funds to make those investments.
Thank you, Greg Smith. Ella Atkinson?
Yeah, thank you. Greg hit on a lot of the things we're doing, you know, with the Affordable Housing Fund, the Title 49 rewrite, upzoning lands so that we can actually build denser housing in the little land that we do have. So, I'll talk a little more about our unhoused population. And, you know, affordable housing is one thing. Low-income housing is a very different thing. And part of the reason we're in this situation is, one, because we have dispersed camping, but also we're seeing the effect of years of cutting of funding of low-income housing, mental health services, addiction services from our state and federal governments. And that's a really hard thing for the city to fill the vacuum of, right? So, long-term, we're going to do our best with Bartlett and continue to support people like GHS in doing low-income housing. We also need to have a place for people to be, whether that's a sanctioned campground or a low-barrier shelter year-round. We just need to have a place for people to exist.
Thank you, Ella Atkinson. Wade Bryson?
So, yeah, my colleagues, of course, have covered a lot of the affordable housing stuff that we've done. We've thrown the kitchen sink at trying to get housing on every level, from affordable housing to big houses so that people can upgrade and starter homes can become new family starter homes. So, along with that, I've also joined the Glory Hall Board in 2021 so I could be closer to that homelessness situation and learn more about it. And right now, Housing First, which is partially funded by the city, has 20 open apartments, and they're having problems putting people in there, and that's a completely different topic. But we are funding, like, GHS. That was 52 units of supportive housing. We have 20 open apartments right now. We have invested resources for that topic.
Thank you, Wade Bryson.
All right. Starting with Greg Smith. Hesco barriers reduced but did not eliminate damage from this year's Mendon Hall Glacier Lake Outburst Flood. A permanent solution may still be years away. How do you propose the city take action to protect residents and their properties from future Glacier Lake flood events? You have 60 seconds.
Yeah, thank you for that. You know, we had -- I will call it a success this year with the outburst flood. Not perfect. We still had 50 homes that were impacted by the flood, but compared to 300 and over 300, that, you know, that was a tremendous relief and, you know, I think job well done there. We need to keep looking at a second phase of Hesco barriers along the river and continue the applied efforts with our federal delegation to really move an enduring solution through the Army Corps of Engineer. We are, you know, we are great support with Senator Sullivan and others in the delegation, and we are, you know, pushing and providing the information and doing everything we can to move on to a solution that will, you know, be something that can help in perpetuity. But short-term, we need to keep working on as well as just pushing as hard as we can on a long-term solution.
Great. Thank you, Greg Smith. Ella Atkinson?
Thank you, yeah. I think I can speak for everyone when I say that the seven-to-10-year timeline is not acceptable. This is a repeated and worsening situation, and so we are doing all that good advocacy work to try to get our long-term solution as quickly as possible. In the meantime, like Mr. Smith said, we are going to look at lengthening the barriers, and certainly, you know, they got really close to being overtopped, so we're already talking with Senator Sullivan and the Army Corps about potentially a midterm solution to help knock down the level of the flooding so that the barriers can continue to mitigate it. You know, that's not an easy thing, and it's going to take a lot of advocacy, but that's something we're doing. And we also, I will point out, have a tremendous advantage and luxury that we have the tribe working with us so well. We have a really strong united front, and people are really dedicated to being sure we protect our homes because it's just not an option to not protect Junoites.
Thank you, Ella Atkinson. Wade Bryson?
Thank you, and I love hearing my colleagues talk. It's almost like we've been at the same meetings, hearing the same information. And so, that's exactly what's going on right now. Here in the Army Corps or the Brigadier General of the Army Corps of Engineers say it's not a 10-year timeline from this moment, it's a timeline from like when the first situation happened. So, folks are working on long-term solutions, but we also need to focus on the lessons learned. So, we have short-term flood fighting. If we hadn't done what we did, the prediction is 1,000 homes would have been impacted this year. So, we do still have short-term flood fighting that we need to do, but we are shifting our focus, and we have a meeting tomorrow at 10:00 that I'm going to for long-term and midterm solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade Bryson. Nano Brooks?
It's true that this year was far less impactful than the previous years, but any homes is too many homes in my eyes. And right now, I believe that doing extra efforts within the lake area would be a good way to supplement the impacts downhill. As far as dredging the bottom of the lake to increase the capacity so the outburst effects aren't as severe, and also, there is the unknown factor of how much silt is being reintroduced into the lake for each outburst, and it could be raising the floor over these last couple years, which could also have negative effects. So, focusing at the lake as a mitigating preemptive measure while the long term gets ironed out would be a great next step.
Great. Thank you, Nano Brooks.
Starting with Ella Atkinson. What policy or budget steps do you support to increase the number of children in reliable, safe, and affordable care? You have 60 seconds.
Yeah, this is a topic I'm very passionate about. You know, childcare is a huge issue in our city, and it's one that really matters a lot. So, we're doing a lot right now. We could be doing more, obviously. This is one of those few big issues that when I talk to staff, they say it's just a money issue. If we funded an infinite amount of money, the problem would be solved. The most effective way we do that is in stipends that actually we pay to the childcare providers, and they use it to raise their workers' wages. And that is the thing that has the single greatest effect, is making sure that the people who are caring for the children can afford to live here. So, that's something I really want to continue to support, and hopefully, you know, there are ways we can get a temporary 1% sales tax or like looking at other funding sources so we can increase that amount that we're funding each year, which now is about $1 million. But it's just one of those things that, you know, especially with like the icebreaker coming and, you know, we need to be really focusing to be sure that we have affordable childcare available for our residents.
Oh, that's me. Thank you, Ella. Wade?
Yes. Seven years ago, I served on the Child Care Task Force. It was a problem then. We've been working on it ever since. Thank you, Ms. Atkinson. We have increased stipends. The CBJ just signed on to apply for a community block grant for AEYC to help them with their facility, and when the Juno School District gave us back a school, the Assembly had the wisdom to turn it into a childcare facility, and again, in partnership and cooperation with Clinckit and HIDA. And so, we have the potential for more childcare now than at any other time in Juno's history because of that action.
Thank you, Wade Bryson. Nano Brooks?
Childcare is an extremely important thing within the community, and it's great to see efforts being put forth in other spheres, but then it's also sad to see programs like Rally leaving the community and ones that have been so critical to the upbringing of so many residents. It's true that all of these issues gets, you know, resolved with money, but if the money is always coming from the people that you're trying to provide the service to, you kind of get yourself into a negative feedback loop. And that's why it's time to really open up all the options, put everything on the table, and really look at how we can start diversifying these revenue streams so we can pay these qualified people, keep them here, but without taking it from their pockets.
Thank you, Nano Brooks. Greg Smith?
Yeah, so, something like childcare, you know, sometimes considered kind of a market failure in that the price people are able and willing to pay and the cost that it takes to provide that service just doesn't match up. To fix that, you need -- you just need money. There's no way around it. You know, when I've looked at the numbers, Ms. Atkinson and I can check, I've seen we spend about $2 million for stipends as well as workforce, which is a key item, working with partners like AEYC to make sure we have people who are, you know, certificated and able and willing to do the work. And then, you know, another strategy is to use city assets like Floyd Dryden for childcare, which actually is a much better site for childcare than, say, a city hall. So, using all our tools to increase childcare for the community. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's it for the Questions for our Assembly Candidates. We'll conclude this section of the forum with candidates' closing statements. You'll each have one minute. Who are we starting with?
Well, how about Wade?
Wade, thank you. How about Wade? Shall we start with you?
So, thank you for having us forum tonight. I'd really like to be able to come and have these discussions. My wife and I have raised five children here. We have a few businesses here in town. We've invested in Juno for our future, for our children's future. Three of my children have left town, and I'm kind of hoping that we could create environments and opportunities so that my children could come back to Juno and live here and hopefully give me some grandkids one day because we're taking care of the childcare right now. It's been a privilege for the last seven years. I have fought for the community. I've fought for marginalized groups. I've fought for groups that can't speak for themselves. I've advocated for childcare. I've fought for Native rights. I like to be somewhat argumentative when we get up there, and if you give me something that I can be passionate about, and the topics in the community are really great fodder for that, and so, there's no topic that I have not been involved in the last seven years, and I would really like to finish the last three. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade Bryson. Nano Brooks?
Thank you very much for having us here and hosting the event. You know, I'm a born and raised Junoite. I have absolute and complete devotion for this town and this community, and I'll be working tirelessly regardless of outcomes to always be making things better for everyone else in the community. Things to just keep in mind that, you know, with the ballot Initiative 3, if it was going to be a shift onto the tourism industry, there would be an opposition from that industry. They've been silent because they know this will be a shift onto the people as our spending habits shift to online spending and we make all of our biggest purchases in the summer. This will hit the people the hardest, and we can't be affording to have that kind of extra financial burden placed on the shoulders when already so much has been done. And I just want to thank you all again, and, you know, always making myself available for anyone if they ever need anything.
Thank you, Nano Brooks. Greg Smith?
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. You know, I will go back to the ballot measures in my last minute just again because they are so potentially impactful to our community. You've heard us talk about some key priorities for Juno: housing, childcare, education, and then things that, you know, like quality of life, aquatics, and Eagle Crest and things that are shown to be reasons why people move here and why they stay here. Should some of those ballot measures in certain combinations go to pass, especially if we lose 8 to 10 million in recurring revenue every year, I'm very concerned at what that would do to our community and our ability to invest in those key priorities to respond to things like the flood and reductions in state and federal funding and also just keep Juno the place that we love it and know it to be and that keeps people staying here and moving here. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg Smith. Ella Atkinson?
Well, first of all, thank you very much, the League of Women Voters. It's always a pleasure to see you up at the Capitol teaching our kids that good civic stuff, and I very much appreciate the work you do in the community and K2 as well. You know, you're all defenders of democracy, as Steve Whitney said, and so thank you for your work. It's been a real privilege to serve on the Assembly these last two years, and I'm hopeful to earn Juno's vote for another three so I can keep working on making housing affordable for our young people and our seniors, you know, making this a good place for our young families and small businesses, and ensuring that now more than ever, we do a good job to preserve Juno as a welcoming and safe community for everybody. So, thank you all for coming out, and make sure to vote by October 7th, and I hope you have a good rest of your night.
Thank you, Ella Atkinson.
That ends the 2025 League of Women Voters Municipal Candidate Forum. Another big thank you for our producing partner, KTOO, and to KTOO, K-I-N-Y, and the Juno Empire for distributing this year's forum, and to our audience, and to those of you listening on the radio or watching online or on television. Thank you and good night.
Major funding for this program was provided by the League of Women Voters of Juno. Major funding for this program was provided by the League of Women Voters of Juno.